All right, I see it's four o'clock. So I'm going to call the November 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Select Board to order. This meeting is being videoconferenced and also recorded. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for the Select Board members who are present.
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
It looks like we're all here. So, welcome, everyone. And we have a full agenda today, so I'll move right on to the consent agenda. September 28th, 2020, Executive Session Number Two, not minutes, not to be released. October 5th, 2020, October 19th, 2020, October 19th, 2020, Executive Session Not To Be Released. Town Accountant Warrants that are dated October, I believe that should read 29th, 2020. And the gift acceptance of the middle school gift of $50,000 for emergency equipment purchases, with our full appreciation to Middlesex for that gift. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Can I ask a quick question? The emergency vehicles? Any more detail about that? I'm just curious. It's a great gift. Emergency equipment purchases. A Middlesex, for a number of years, has made contributions to this category. And I think that's all the detail we have at this time. Okay.
Yeah, there are, and I don't, as Linda noted, I don't have details, but there are expenses that come up during the year for police and fire that, I know these funds offset. Sometimes it's grant match, sometimes it's replacement of equipment that needs to be replaced that is unbudgeted.
Okay, so it's not a specific piece of equipment. It's the general donation for emergency equipment. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do I?
And then I also just had a one-word amendment on page 17 of our packet. There's just a typo that says...
We're dealing with the consent agenda right now?
Right, but they're the minutes from October 19th.
Okay, go ahead.
And so there is a statement that adjourn executive session. So I just suggest to add to, adjourn to executive session.
We know you read the minutes. Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
So noted.
So I think we already have a second. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. We'll move on to the town manager's report.
Yes, hi, good evening. I had a brief report, and I had a couple of items, such as the repaving of the Millbrook Farm parking lot that'll create some disruption on Cambridge Turnpike. But I have a few other items, but I think I'm going to, that stuff got pushed literally off the front page by the governor's press conference this afternoon, for those who didn't see it. He made what I would term to be pretty significant revisions to existing orders. And I'll just give a brief summary. As you know, he did start off by talking about cases going up in the Commonwealth, which they have been. And so the big news is the mask advisory has been clarified to basically wearing a mask indoors or outdoors, you know, whenever in public spaces, indoors or outdoors. The previous guidance had been mask or six feet. It is now mask-wearing regardless of social distancing. So it's now a mandate. And this goes into effect at 12:01 on Friday, the 6th. The other thing that he has changed is any gatherings must end at 9:30. He also reduced the, he also reduced to gatherings, the number from 10, from 25 to 10 for indoors, and from 50 to 25 for outdoor gatherings. Restaurant service, like, you know, in-place, in-house dining and the sales of alcoholic beverages now must end at 9:30. And then there is a stay-at-home advisory for, from 10:00 p.m., basically a curfew. And so another way of saying that, from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. There's more detailed information on the states on mask.gov. But those are the big, those were pretty significant changes, I think, to how we've been regulating COVID-19. So I want to let folks know that that has happened today. It goes, like I said, goes into effect Friday morning. And, you know, I think the goal, his stated goal, as I heard from his, from the press conference, was to try and keep schools and businesses open to the greatest extent possible, and to make sure that people are at home with members of their household at a reasonable hour, in this case, 10:00 p.m. So, any questions about that new information?
Okay, thank you very much.
So then, just, obviously tomorrow is Election Day. And I think we've received, I think we've received a substantial number of early votes and mail-in ballots. So I don't know what turnout will be like at the polling places. But obviously, not just the clerk, but many town departments are actively involved in, you know, helping out with the processing of the election and making sure we're keeping an eye on information that we think would be impactful to the community on Election Day and after. So I think we are in as good a place as we can be with that, and happy to take any questions on that as well. Matt?
I just wanted to note that I heard today that Concord is the second-highest percentage of early voting in the state, just after Eastham, with over 70% of registered voters having voted early.
Yeah, and I'll say that even from the very first days of it, it was clear that early voting and mail-in voting turnout was going to be robust tonight. So I hadn't seen that stat, Matt, so thanks for bringing that up, but I'm not surprised.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda, there also is a holiday, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The governor's thing really kind of changed my script here for a hundred of you this afternoon. So there is a holiday shopping event on Saturday in both Concord and West Concord. So folks are around. CMLP put up the greenery and the lights, and so it should be, here are the things.
Okay. Since you mentioned voting, I will, and Matt, with that interesting statistic, I'll just, one last time, encourage the 30% to get out and vote. And as, during the Election Day and as we await the results, I just want to encourage all Concord citizens to be respectful of the results and respond peacefully. And remember, and while doing so, remember Concord's sense of shared community as a value and our value of peaceful discourse. So with that, I'm going to ask the town clerk to open up the public hearing for the FY21 tax levy classification hearing. You're on mute, Susan? You're on mute, we can't hear you.
All right, I apologize. I move to open the public hearing for the FY21 tax levy classification.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous. So I see that Lain Partridge is here. Lain, would you like to open up this discussion?
Sure, thank you, Lain Partridge, Town Assessor. We also have Tom Matthews, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, with us.
Yes.
If, with your permission, I'll share my screen, and I have a, we have a PowerPoint that we'd like to bring up.
Very good. And, Lain, would you like to go through it and then take questions? Or may we ask questions as you go along? How would you like to proceed?
I think it's going to be fairly short. Tom is going to present. So I think we're going to kind of skip over a lot of it and give you the meat, and then probably questions will be better at the end.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Let me share my screen and see if I can get this going.
All right. And Lain, you'll be able to just move it along as I asked you to.
Sure.
And I'll be giving the presentation today. I'm Tom Matthews, Chair of the Board of Assessors. I have my little four-year-old helper here I can't get rid of. So she'll be along with us today. If questions do come up as I'm giving the presentation, you can ask as I'm going along. And I'm also happy to answer at the end as well. So, read through this material quite a bit. So we're here to present to you the fiscal year 2021 classification meeting to set the tax rate. And, Lain, if you want to go to the next slide, please. You're in notes mode, can you just do it in straight play?
Sorry about that.
No problem. I think it'd be easier for everybody.
If I can get rid of it. I don't know why I'm in that, Tom, sorry.
If you clicked a little ellipsis, the dot-dot-dot, in that view, there's an option to set, to get rid of the presenter view.
Try that again, then.
So underneath of the slide, there's the dot-dot-dot, yeah? And there should be some hide presenter view. Huh.
That's what I said, huh?
I want hitting the play at the top. That's what I always do, right up here. At the top of your screen, there's the play. Go up right from there, just go up and over to the right, one more.
I think it's...
I think it's hidden behind that.
Yeah.
Right there, click on that, that should get you a play mode.
Yeah. Jeez. Yeah, see, it's not going.
All right, we'll work with this. You can just start, we can just go along.
Yeah, sorry about that, folks.
That's all right. Technology issues will affect us whether we're in person or on Zoom. So the outline for today's presentation, we're going to talk about recertification, new growth, total taxable value, tax levy calculation. You've gotten these slides ahead of time, so I'll have Lain just move on to the next slide. Probably slide four privately, that's Lain, thank you. So we are not in a recertification year. The Department of Revenue requires recertification for the town every five years. So fiscal year 2021 is just going to be an interim year. And as you can see from the slide, our next recertification year will be in 2023. So, wrong direction for me. Lain, you have to go to the next...
Yep, hang on. No.
There we go. So, so new growth, so the period for new growth, as you know, is from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. For the residential, our value increased by $55,895,400, which was taxes of $795,392. We also had growth with, that included single-family condominiums, two-family, and then some land and mixed use. Let me see here. So our total kind of new growth with commercial, industrial, personal property, total $67,310,400, which gave us a new tax revenue of $957,827. So the total taxable value, you will see that we did see, we basically remained even with a slight drop in the value of property in the residential sector, also the same with commercial, industrial, and property. And you may ask why the values went down, and that's mostly because of our excessively large, hold on a minute. Our excessively large properties are not selling as well as some of our more core market properties. So you did see a slight decrease in the value of properties going from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2021. So this here is our tax levy calculation, doing a comparison from fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Probably the big thing is we have an unused levy limit of $4,459,506. And this is the amount of money that we have between the maximum amount we can raise and what the town needs to fund. So we're still sitting in a good position financially as a community. So we look here to create our tax rate. And our tax rate for this upcoming year is going to be $14.71. And that's being calculated by the total property tax levy of $98,128,300, divided by the total taxable valuation of $6,670,507,650, which gives us our tax rate of $14.71. And this is the tax rate before accounting for the senior means test of exemption. So qualifications for the senior means test exemption is for people over the age of 65 and/or over. There are income requirements, then we follow the state circuit breaker for that program. And we also have a home rule for the town median, which has an asset limit of $250,000. We also apply a home rule for the value of the property. So this is funded by a shift in the tax rate. So last year, we had 46 applications, and this year, we had 35 applications. Hold on a second, please. We were able to approve 34 of the 35 and granting $123,432 of relief for people over the age of 65. This program will shift our tax rate two cents, and that will create a unified tax from, is it $14.71 to $14.73, Lain? Is that correct?
No, it's some recalculation last minute this morning. We're at $14.72 with the shift.
All right, thank you. So one of the big things we need from the Select Board is to set our residential factor. And this is the rate that we will use for all of our classifications, there are four classifications. And the rate that we're looking to set is .99960. And this would be applied to both residential and open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And, so, thank you. So for classification issues, we, as a Board of Assessors, do not recommend an open space discount. We don't have any parcels that would fall under this. We find that most of the landowners with large, open properties are using the chapter program, which is 61, 61A, and 61B. They get a better discount. So the Board of Assessors is recommending that we not adopt the open space discount. Thank you, Lain. The next issue we have to talk about is residential exemptions. Again, the Board of Assessors does not recommend to adopt residential exemptions. In the state of Massachusetts, we have 351 communities, only 13 use this. And it's primarily used in urban areas, in the cities with lots of multifamilies, and also second homes. And where Concord is 91% owner-occupied, we don't recommend residential exemptions. This is the small commercial exemptions. The Board of Assessors does not recommend the adoption of a small commercial exemption. And this has to do with properties that are valued under $1 million that are owned and occupied by the owner of the building. This is not recommended either. Thank you. So, thank you, Lain. So in summary, what we are recommending this evening is to have a single tax rate of a minimum residential factor of .99960. Deemed to be the most fair. Sorry about this. And the Board of Assessors does not recommend adoption of the open space discount residential exemption or the small business exemption.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Jane?
Is the reason for not recommending the small business exemption simply because the value of our space, our retailer or business space is so, that it would fundamentally make this unnecessary? Or unworkable?
I guess I'll take that one, Tom.
I'll let Lain answer this one, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a difficult program. There's only one community that I know of that does it. You have to have the tenant or the occupant of the building qualify to be on a list from the Department of Revenue. So the occupant has to qualify with DOR first, get put on the list before we can even apply for it. So if it's something we thought we might do, you'd have to give the commercial, industrial, actually just commercial, community fair warning that it's coming so that they could get on the list, so that we give it to them. The other problem with it is it not, won't necessarily help tenants. So if the tenant is a small business under $1 million, and therefore we could grant the exemption, it doesn't necessarily go to the tenant, it would go to the landlord.
Right.
And then we'd have to believe that the landlord would share it with the tenant. They don't have to. It's just not a very well-written program, so we've never thought it would work in Concord.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Matt?
So the residential exemption, I think for the past 15 years, the very same logic's been used. There was, Tony Legalpo wrote a memo back in 2005, and there really hasn't been any detailed consideration since then. Every year, the numbers are updated, and that's about it. But when I looked at that rationale, I just thought, you know, it is worth taking a second look. And one of the reasons used in that memo is that there isn't necessarily a correlation with property value and someone's income or ability to pay. And I had an experience in running for office where I used Every Door Direct Mail, where I was able to get fairly granular income data, right? So you aren't able to get individual household data, of course. But for each route within town, and there are over 20 of them, you can get an average income for households in, on that route. And then if you compare that to the average property value, you'll find the two are very well-correlated, in fact. So it actually is not, I mean, you know, the case that you can't decide this. I think that actually with a little bit more research, you might be able to determine that those who have less expensive houses in Concord actually have fewer resources. So that, just saying that that is one thing. The other thing is that a lot of times the residential exemption is used in order to shift the tax burden more to commercial property in those communities that have a lot of commercial property ability. I mean, in that you have larger apartment houses and so forth. And I think that in our case, you know, what would help was just simply, you know, within the residential area, set a rate that's based upon the exemption, but to calculate the commercial rate at a lower rate based upon what it would have been without the exemption. In other words, lower the relative rate of commercial property tax so that they would not be affected by the residential exemption being applied and end up with a higher overall rate. So I'm just saying that there are ways, I believe, that we should be looking at the residential exemption because income stratification has only increased over the last 15 years and as well in Concord as anywhere else. And this is something, an issue, I think that, you know, for those that are on the lower end of the spectrum, it's becoming less and less affordable to live in town. So I'm not suggesting that we do that this year, but I do think that the Board of Assessors ought to take a look over this next year, take a second look at this, because I don't think that we've looked at it in a very long time.
We certainly could do that, and we can bring it up on a board meeting. The residential exemption does not affect the commercial rate at all, however. The tax rate is set on a uniform basis, and then you apply the residential exemption. So it would only affect residential properties. So you would have a higher residential rate and the same commercial rate.
Okay, well, that's great. That means that what I was hoping would happen would automatically happen. But then the other piece, which is basically, would it have the effect that it's intended to have? Which is to, you know, lower taxes for those that have fewer means and perhaps increase them for those that have more. That's something I think that needs to be checked, because I think that right now, the assumption is there is no relationship. But I believe that, in fact, there may be.
Well, the other part of that paper that Tony Legalpo wrote was that you would also hit the lowest income people in our community the hardest, because it will not apply to rental property. So someone who's in Concord in a rental property would not get the advantage of this.
So is it not possible to exclude those categories of, it's not technically possible to do?
No, there's no, there's no exemption for it. It's very blunt, a blunt thing, where it's, you either are, own the property and a resident of Concord, then you get the exemption. If you don't own the property, even though you live here, you can't get it. So it's a very blunt type of thing, and it will hurt, all the renters, it'll hurt the most. You're totally right that the lower-valued houses will definitely get a big reduction. But the break-even point is about 1,000, about $1,233, I think it was this year, if I remember correctly when I did it. That's the break-even point, where the reduction in the tax rate equals the amount of, sorry, the increase in the tax rate equals the reduction from the exemption.
Yeah, and the other thing is, of course, the calculations assume the maximum of 35%, but a more modest percentage of, let's say, 20%, I think could yield a more acceptable type of ratio.
It's up to the Select Board, this is a decision of you. If you direct us to analyze it again, we'll bring it back to you in June and let you decide whether you do it or you don't do it. We have looked at it a lot in the last, since I've been here, I've been asked about this and analyzed it at least six times for the board, but I'd be glad to do it for you again.
I don't know how other board members feel, but that, I just thought it should be raised. Because I've seen the same language in all the reports for quite some time. So it didn't seem like it had been really heavily investigated for a while.
We'll come back to that, Matt. Are there any other comments or questions for the presenters? So I have a question then. I noticed that there was mention in the report that there were, it seemed like a higher number of requests for abatements. And I'm just wondering if those abatements have been analyzed, not only for the classification rate, but also for the relative real estate of value category that each of those abatements was requested in? Has that been analyzed?
Yes, it has. I mean, I'll let Lain, most of the abatements were for large properties in Concord. But I'll let Lain dive into that a little bit more.
So we do have, I don't have it on this PowerPoint, but we do have, in the tax analysis that we gave you, it's a demonstration of what was abated and in which categories. It was less than 1% of, you know, I mean, we're, and I believe the number of abatements was down over 10 from last year. So I'm not, I'm a little, a little lost at where you're going with it.
Okay, so forgive me if I'm misremembering some of that. I don't have it in front of me right now either. But of the, of the abatements that were made, you've already stated that that was basically coming in from the higher-level properties. So, and the majority of them were residential? properties, so, and the majority of them were residential?
Not higher level, but larger, you know, properties that are 8,000 to 15,000 square feet and large parcels of land.
Okay.
It's not necessarily price, it's mostly size.
Okay, that's helpful to know. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, just to follow up on that, we have almost 7,000 parcels of taxable property in the town of Concord, so to only have about 49 abatements is pretty excellent, because there were years prior to my joining the board where they'd have 400, 500 applications for abatements. So I think the town's doing a really nice job with aligning values with the marketplace.
Yeah, that's good perspective, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board members? If not, I'm going to open it up to public comments or questions.
I just have one more question, which was, I noticed that the info that you're presenting online is different from what we have in today's packet. Can we get a new copy or something?
I certainly can forward them to you. We had some changes that were made at about 3 o'clock this afternoon, which did change the numbers slightly. So yes, I will certainly forward the new information to you as soon as this is over.
Thanks.
Are there any members of the public who would like to ask a question of our presenters or make a comment regarding this? Okay, seeing none and hearing none. I will ask the clerk to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? So Matt, I said I would come back to this. You raised the question about an analysis might be in order, not necessarily for this year, but going forward for next year. How do other board members feel about that?
I guess it's a good idea to do it periodically. In my experience, I agree with what Lane and Tom have said, the way the law is written, I know what you're trying to accomplish, Matt, but the numbers, the way you have to calculate it, it probably will not work out, but maybe it's worth a try. I know very few towns have had success trying to do that, and that's why we have a tax relief committee, we have special legislation, we have, you know, all these other things we've been doing in the last few years, because we haven't been able to accomplish our objective with these factors. But I have no objection if the assessors want to take another look, that's fine.
Matt, given the information we've received today, are you still recommending to do that?
I guess I really would like to look more closely at the question of apartment buildings in particular, but I would say it still seems worth taking a look, I think. Just again, that over the last 15 years, I do feel like things have continued to develop, that, you know, there are communities that do have this in place. Yes, we are a little different profile than those, but there may be a way, like I said, even, and it may not be the full 35%. I think, you know, 20% or something like that might be helpful without burdening others. So this, I guess it's just something to model.
Okay. So I'm going to, I think we've got a number of motions here that we need to accomplish related to the tax classification rate. So I'm going to first ask Susan to go through the motions, and hopefully they reflect the new numbers that we had been given today.
The motion that I have on my paperwork is the move to retain the uniform tax rate of $14.71 per $1,000 of valuation for FY '21. That's the only one I've got.
And I think Lane said it was $14.72 today with the new numbers.
Yeah. Correct, but you're actually not voting a tax rate, you're voting the minimum residential factor of .999960, four nines and a six zero.
Okay.
That would be the motion that would actually result in a tax, in a uniform tax rate of 1472.
Okay, can you just repeat what it's called? The minimum?
Minimum residential factor.
Okay. All right, let me try this again. Move to approve the minimum residential factor of .999960 for FY '21.
Second, yeah. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
I'm sorry, aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. And now, would the clerk like to call a motion which directs the Board of Assessors and the Assessor's Office to analyze the residential tax rate going forward?
Okay, just a second.
The residential exemption.
Thank you, residential exemption.
Okay. A move to direct the Board of Assessors and the Assessor's Office to examine the residential exemption.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thanks.
And that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. So Lane and Matthew, thank you both for the, all the work that goes into this. I know it's a short, relatively short presentation compared to all the ongoing work that both of your groups are doing, and I also appreciate your willingness to take another look at this and come back to the select board with that analysis.
Sure, sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, now, moving on to the next agenda item, it's a review of the application for permission to fire the Town of Concord cannons by the Concord Independent Battery, and is someone here to represent the battery today?
If there's not, I can certainly speak to this.
Fine.
Mr. Ken, I think you're on mute.
Okay.
He's still muted.
Mr. Ken, you're still muted.
Try it again. All right, I had my computer muted, my fault. So again, Phil Kenny, I'm president of the Concord Independent Battery Association.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thanks.
So we have your application, thank you very much. Did you want to make a few comments about it?
Well, yeah, it'll certainly, you know, the, this is a, frankly, a longstanding process that the battery goes through, and it's what I call a compliance package back to the town each and every year. We have a, we have a outstanding contract with the, with the town that details these sets of information back to the town prior to the April period, April 19th period of celebrations, and obviously continuing through the year. Obviously, this year, we got totally cut short, and everybody else got cut at the knees, so we did a lot of work associated with the application. And as I had mentioned a couple of times to the town manager, whether this application was going to be utilized for actual firing or not, it was still important that we provided all the documentation required in the contract with the town and maintained that year-over-year continuity of, you know, providing that data. And as a result, for us as a battery, to continue the process of, you know, the training, they bring in, bring on new members and making sure that that process has some continuity to it going forward. Certainly, as we get this application in now, I know that we were kind of held up because of the springtime events and potentially, it looks like it might be for a little bit longer as well. I have been requested by the Public Celebrations Committee to provide Veterans Day support for what would be, looks like a very truncated, but certainly an appropriate celebration and ceremony for Veterans Day. So therefore, I was pushing a little bit on the application because not only would we have the continuity associated with the approval of it, but we'd be in preparation to be able to support the Public Celebrations and Ceremony Committee for November 11th. So that's basically the background of where we are today.
Thank you, that's helpful. I did notice on the, in the application material that the captain's license had expired, but you've since updated.
Yeah, I can explain that. You know, certainly, we got, we got some notifications from the Department of Fire Security over in Nostao that a lot of the applications, because of the COVID situations, had been backed up, but he did receive, and that was actually an application that was effective 9/11 of 2020, but then extended now into 2025. So yeah, that application is active.
I raised it just to alert
Sure.
my colleague.
Just a little background on that, if you don't mind. We did have, in early March, we had Dave Nichols from the Concord Fire Department and his counterpart, Matt Picard from the State Fire Marshal's Office, attend one of our training events in, actually just before, before the shutdown started taking place. And they, they spent a couple hours with us, and it was in preparation for people that have applications coming up next year, as well as others in the battery that want to apply, that they were there and give us, provide us the guidance, as well as observe the training, and then provide us the guidance to be able to go get those new applications done. Obviously, we were shut off on that one as we get into the year, so.
Sure. Well, thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know you were up to date on that in terms of.
Yep.
Yep, so thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Linda?
From the town manager, okay?
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to piggyback on Phil's remarks and just, this was supposed to happen back in the spring, and we, you know, we haven't had too many of these, but we were not able to find the package of information that the Concord Independent Battery had sent in by mail to the townhouse back in April. And so I want to thank them for being patient and resubmitting and, you know, hanging in there with us. It was, like I said, this was something that should have been done a long time ago, and so I just want to thank them for being patient.
Yep, thank you, Stephen.
And just one other question I have, if I don't have any other. I noticed that there is a date to be determined for a private ceremony at Sleepy Hollow for a private family. Can you just, is that typical, and can you just say a little more about that?
Sure. That was a request made by the Muddy family, right? They had four brothers that are obviously associated with the military, and they were looking for a singular ceremony. And to answer your question, yes, we've done a number of these over the years for former battery members, for honored citizens, for certain people within the community that requested it, and it is something that we will, in the past, I know Stephen's not familiar with it, but we've done it in the past, and previous town managers, we have a process by which we go through to do those requests, if and when and if they occur.
Okay. So that's an outstanding request, and the date is to be determined?
It, date is to be determined, they kind of pulled the plug on it, you know, in the summertime, which made perfect sense, and, you know, it's out there, but we haven't heard anything subsequent to that. And given we're coming up with the winter months, I doubt that it'll happen this winter.
So would you come back to the select board with the actual date?
Once I hear, you know, once we know what those requests would be, certainly, we, you know, we would come to them almost immediately and say, okay, we've got this request, here's the details of the request, the fire permits, all of that.
Okay.
Through the process.
Very good, thank you. All right, so I think we appreciate all the work that your group does for the patriotic events in town, and it's certainly an important part of our cultural history, so thank you very much. So do I hear any other discussion, and if not, I'm ready for a motion from the clerk.
Move to approve the application to fire the Town of Concord cannons by the Concord Independent Battery as included in the meeting materials for the November 2 select board meeting.
And amended with the updated license information.
Yeah, right.
And amended the updated license information.
Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, if I may, so that request for Veterans Day is currently in process with the Public Celebrations Committee, and I'm working with them with regards to the details on it. Obviously, it's going to be some kind of a very limited ceremony of some sorts, the details to be determined.
Yes.
But if we're okay to go forward, that's kind of the reason I really wanted to get this done, so that I could respond positively to them.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's listed as one of the events.
Yes.
Yep, there's a schematic.
Yep. We provided the schematics of it, and just so you know, we originally fired at Sleepy Hollow, and we've been requested to do St. Bernard's as well. We had a permit for St. Bernard's, but that was applicable for Memorial Day. Tac Palmer, who's one of our lieutenants, is working with Fire Chief Judge to get that amended for the timeframe associated with November 11th. So we expect that to be closed, no problems at all.
Very good. All right, I think we have a motion on the floor, and we're ready to hear the clerk call the roll.
We have a second?
We did.
Okay. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So we'll listen for the cannons on November 11th next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bye-bye now.
Bye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next agenda item is to delegate the town manager the authority for the right of first refusal for 333 Walden Street, and I believe Liz, Elizabeth Rust is here to speak to that. Elizabeth?
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody, or good afternoon. I think that this is a pretty routine administrative item, and often the town manager has signed this in the past without bringing it to the board, so I think it's good practice to bring it to the board and ask specifically for that delegation of authority. And what this does is move the, just back up, so the deed writer allows the town to purchase the unit, and so that would be the right of first refusal to actually purchase it for the town, or to proceed to locate an eligible purchaser, which is the normal course of events.
And this will be retained as an affordable home?
Yes, yes, yes. This has a permanent housing restriction, so there's no, there's no jeopardy of losing the unit, it's really just whether the town wanted to buy it, or to proceed to find an eligible purchaser, we would perform those activities for the town.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none.
Linda? I have a question. Liz, under what conditions would the town do the, buy the unit if it's going to be sold as an affordable unit to a citizen? I mean, what would be the point of that, do you know?
It's a highly unusual circumstance, but the deed writer has that language, just in case. Sometimes I've seen situations where the town wants to assign that right of first refusal to like a housing authority who might be looking to purchase units, or if there's some particular situation where the town would like to purchase the unit, and, and I don't know what.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Well, presumably rented, right? I mean, it could be rented as an affordable
I mean, it could be rented as an affordable unit by the town, couldn't it?
Any number of things could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is standard language and in, in most restrictions that the monitoring agent has this right.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, I have a clerk make the motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to sign a letter on behalf of the town declining to exercise the right of first refusal for the resale of the local initiative project unit at 333 Walden Street.
Second.
Okay. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimously so declare. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we'll move on next to the Concord Middle School Building Committee request to resume committee work. And I see Tim Hald is here. And Tim, I don't know if you got Dawn with you or not.
Dawn was here for a while. I don't know whether she's still with us.
I'm still here, Tim.
Okay.
Welcome, both of you.
Linda?
I don't know if Lori is here. She was, I thought she was going to come, but perhaps not.
And Lori Hunter is here.
Yep, I'm here. Linda, before we do this on our, on our agenda, we have review local initiative plan for 930 Main Street.
Yes, I'm sorry, I skipped that. So can you stay on hold just for a second, school people, school building people? Sorry, I apologize. Thank you, Jane. Review the local initiative plan for 930 Main Street, which is also Elizabeth Russ. So that's why I'm asking if we can go ahead with that.
Yep, I'm here. And Brenda Gould is also on the call. She's the Executive Director for Habitat. This is the LIP application, Local Initiative Program, which goes to the state and includes, you know, the permit for the project, which has been granted by the planning board and the zoning board for duplex. And so this starts the state approval process so that the units would be eligible through the LIP program and eligible for the SHI. So this is the regulatory framework part of the project. It's signed by the, the chair, so this would be looking for Linda's signature as well as the CHDC, and they signed it last week.
So this is a wonderful project. It's getting play in a number of different committees that people have already mentioned in their liaison reports, et cetera. And we appreciate all the detail that was included in our packet. Is there any additional comments or questions from the board?
I just think it's going to be a fabulously welcome part of our community.
Okay.
Hi. From the Habitat perspective, I'd like to say thank you to all of the Town of Concord. This has been a huge, hugely successful partnership project. It hasn't even started, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I think we're ready for a motion from the clerk.
Move to approve the local initiative plan for 930 Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Good luck to all of you with implementing this project now, and we look forward to seeing the final result.
Thank you very much. We'll come back and report to you.
Good.
And if I could follow up, Linda, with your signature, that would be great. I don't know how you're doing that in this kind of day and age.
We'll have it before the night's over.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Welcome back, Middle School Building Committee people. I apologize for that.
No problem.
So Tim, do you, would you like to open this discussion?
Sure. I, I think that, I, I think that I provided a document, and I think that was probably circulated to the board members and I.
It was. They received it probably pretty late this afternoon.
Yeah, I'm sure they did. I'm sorry about that. We were, we were, we had some, we were trying to get this scheduled because it's timely. So I appreciate your putting us on the agenda and I appreciate your consideration of this. What, well, I won't, I won't reiterate everything that was in that note, but essentially, we are coming before you to ask the, to you to consider ending the pause that we've taken in our project and initiate and resume the formal activities of the committee. We came to you in the early summer and based on a couple of factors, we asked the Select Board to consider taking a pause in the project for a number of reasons. One was communications, two was the financial impact of the, we're the unsure of financial impact of the COVID, which we didn't know at that time. So we wanted to take a, a pause in our project with the idea that would restart when we felt it was a good time. And we had enough confidence in the process to move forward. We've talked, the chairs of the committee have collaborated with the superintendent, and we've determined that we believe it's a, it's an appropriate time to restart the project. So we are asking you to consider basically allowing us to restart the project at, on or about the end of this month or, or December 1st. So, and I, I know this is a discussion, it's a, it's a huge project for the town, one of the largest the town will ever undertake. So we can speak to the communications issues, given, and Lori is probably best able to do this, but given the start of school, we learned a lot about, or they learned a lot about communicating with the parent community. And you might want to comment on that, Lori, that we think now that we are able to get the kind of robust feedback and regular feedback and detailed feedback that we need from both the school and community in order to, to execute this project well. So you might want to comment on that, Lori.
Sure. Yeah, I think that, and then maybe just in terms of timeline, that we're really open to that being your thought process. But in terms of communication, I, reopen, we really engaged the community in the planning process this summer. And we learned a lot about how to do that effectively through forums on Zoom. I ran, well, since March, from March through June, I ran a weekly Friday afternoon opportunity for parents. And then on summer long, we opened it up to the various committees that were working. And it really became an opportunity to both present, but also garner a lot of feedback and input. And we saw, probably not to your surprise, that we could draw hundreds of people to an event in a way that we never would have in person. So that's actually starting to feel like a, you know, a positive as we go into this project, that the technology actually began as daunting, but now becomes simply convenient for people. They're able to engage from their homes and without needing childcare, especially as we talk on the parent community, but the community at large. And I've actually been on Zooms with other organizations in town, so I know they're all of the same mindset at this point, the League of Women Voters and the Rotary. I've been on their Zoom calls and provided them updates on school reopening. So I know the, you know, the, the skill and talents that is there across all generations, which I think makes, makes this a positive. So I think our hope is to get back to it. We kind, we stopped at a hard place. I think that's the one other piece I want to mention. We stopped with early looks at design, cost, and square footage that weren't where we wanted to, where we're not going to be able to land. So to not get back to that work, so we can bring you an effective, efficient, cost, cost-effective building seems really, this would be a very valuable period to do that. And then, of course, we know the fiscal piece is still a challenge and want to have that conversation with all of you. I think there's a couple of different ways to come at that. Whether we even get into that tonight is up to, up to the chair and the, the Select Board. But we'd really like to get back to where we left off. It felt like sort of an abrupt stop. We got as far as we could, and then it just wasn't coming together and we weren't feeling as effective. So we didn't want to keep going that way. But to leave it that way, now that we're feeling the feet are under our ground at school and we know how to engage with people, I think would be time well spent, given that we're working with the town's $1.5 million actively already, so.
Yeah, we also got feedback from both of our partners, our OPM, which is Hill International, and our design partner, which is SMMA, that they are actually doing fairly well in terms of the communications with most of the projects they're managing and, and keeping them on track. So that was a good thing to hear. So the net of all that is we're, we're pretty confident that we can do this in terms of the communication. I think that, I think it's useful to talk with you about the financial situation. We know it's going, this is a significant project. If we were to start, when we suggest, we would believe that we could be in the position to put before the town a suggested alternative with the price for consideration in the fall of this next year. Whether that's the right thing to do or not is really a discussion that you all need to engage with and, and decide. But that's kind of the schedule that we could come back to the town with and be ready for the town to say we want to build the school or not. Okay? So that, oh, just an aside, I, in, in looking back at our decision to pause, I'm very glad that we did it. Now, watching what happened in terms of the effort for all of the people internal to the school and, and many others, I'm sure, to get the school up functioning safely and give the parent community confidence in that process was an extraordinary task. And it's, it's ongoing. I mean, they basically had to, you know, last spring, they had to create an electronic school, but it was, it was not exactly everything everybody wanted. So in the fall, there were significant enhancements to the way that the education is provided. And I do not believe that the administration would have had the bandwidth or the, the ability to deal with the building project at that time. So I think it was a wise choice to take a pause.
Well, I'm sure all of you have not come back to us asking to resume this effort without a great deal of thought given to it. I think one question that is going to, that was probably on all of our minds, really has to do with readiness in the fall of '21. And there are so many unknowns right now. And, you know, we're being told that there are even perhaps bigger challenges ahead for FY '22 and FY '23. We don't know. So I guess to start this conversation with my colleagues here today, I would ask, if we were to resume this, the, the rest of the study right now, the feasibility study, and it did not go forward in the fall of '21, do you see some real disconnect between having started again and then perhaps having to have to take a significant, or even a short-term or significant hiatus before it would come before the town?
Oh, we would have, at the end of that.
I'm not presuming what would happen, but I'm just trying to help us.
Yeah, there are a number, there are a few dimensions to that. It's just, just first, in terms of the work product, we would, at that, at the end of this project, we will have a feasibility study, i.e. what, our, a projection of what this will cost and where it will go and all of those kinds of things. And then secondarily, a schematic design, which is a much more detailed drawing of the building and costing of the building. So you're up at a very high, much more high confidence level of what it will cost. It's not bid yet because that's in the next phase when you actually make the decision, but you'd have a good handle on what it would cost. If you were to delay after that, I, I don't think for some period of time that that conceptual design would change. Okay, it's, it is the middle school that the, that the, that the, that the committee has decided, has said that they want for the town. However, there, the longer you wait, there could be cost implications to that. Okay? So that's, the, the, the other side of it, you know, you always look at is if you don't do it, and if we don't resume, there's this gap, which might be, I think, worse than a gap after we completed schematic design. Okay? Because right now, we're sort of halfway. We're just about at the end of feasibility study and ready to start schematic design. If we had a much more significant gap right now, the personnel probably at the partners would have a good chance of changing, that they'd move on to other things. And I think that could probably impact us more than if we, as a town, were to decide we're going to wait another year after we completed schematic design, if that makes sense. Dawn, Dawn can probably speak to this as well as anyone. She's, it's her work.
Sure. I think it's also worth noting, Madam Chair, that the current data that we're seeing, there's been some time since we paused. And it's important to understand that this obviously has an effect on the construction trades. And in general, right now, we're seeing favorable costs come in. As an example, I have multiple projects that have continued through this time and are coming in on or under, significantly under budget. And in talking with our partners at SMMA, they're finding similar trends. So, you know, if there's an upside, that may be one of them. I don't know if it's just that people are looking for work or whatnot. So my point in saying this is that, as Tim alluded to, the longer you wait, there's more escalation and there are costs associated with it. And we all know a new middle school is needed. I think even these times are showing how drastically they are as far as systems and, you know, general health of the students, health and wellness. I think it's important to note that it's more than just, you know, a building, but it's about the health of our students. So, you know, as far as cost and schedule, they are intertwined. And, you know, I think it's, if we were to pause, if we were to get through schematic and then have to wait, to Tim's point, there, you know, there may be cost implications. If we were to continue to pause now, I think at some point, he's right, our, our partners may start to de-staff the project from a standpoint of they're not just going to sit around and continue to wait if we're unsure about what our, our, you know, schedule would be.
Okay. So other Select Board members, comments, questions? Susan?
I agree with what the committee has said about, it seems to me that it's on, if it's more advantageous to, for the process to move through this, to have them resume and get through the schematic design. And, and one of the things that struck me was the, the turnover in personnel with their partners, because I, I believe, having been on the committee up until it paused in July, it takes some time to develop those relationships, working relationships with those consultants. And although that's not a financial issue, I think it's, it would be better if they could continue with the same group. And I think the financial question is not something we have to address. First of all, we don't know the number. And second of all, we don't have this crystal ball for, you know, a year from now, what the world and the town and everything else is going to look like. So I don't think that should be a reason to delay this portion of it. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Matt?
Well, when I think about risks, it's beyond the communication risk and the financial risk. It's also just programmatically, you know, what is happening to education that is a consequence of the last six months and more. And I, it's just, things are moving very quickly, of course, in higher education, perhaps less so in the middle school realm. But I still wonder if we're, you know, aiming to where the puck is going versus where the puck is, you know, as far as our needs. And will we know more later than we do now? It's, it's tough. It's tough to decide, but that, that's the third risk that I see potentially about putting together a conceptual design. We definitely need a new, new middle school. Absolutely. It's just, are we real clear on what it is that we need it to be? Yeah, a couple of, a couple of things. I'll, I'll let Lori think for a minute because she's the real answer here. You kind of got to look at that of where we are, okay? In terms of, one of the things that we've discovered as we're, we're considering the new middle school is we are not now where education is, okay? And we are designing the school. school is we are not now where education is, okay? And we are designing the school for a place that was in the future, okay? In terms of teaming and a whole set of other things related to the design of a middle school. So if we were to delay, we're even farther away from even what we know to be the current trends, okay? And I find it, and I'll let Dr. Hunter talk to this because I, I think she's positioned much better than I. But it's inconceivable to me at the inner school, at the middle school level, there isn't going to be in-place learning as the center of that experience. But I'll let, I'll let Lori talk to it.
I guess a few things come to mind right away. First, we've never valued the physical facilities before the way we do now. We will never take them for granted again. Having kids in person in a school building together is enormously important in, in K-12 education. I don't think, I can find any of my colleagues who would doubt that. I think in terms of what we've seen at the current middle schools, it's been interesting as we've done all this work on undoing, the, the social distancing and some of the safety measures have had to peel our progress backwards in several places with all our collaborative work and all the way we do things. And actually, we undid the least at the middle schools, which is really telling in terms of how much of those buildings limit us. At the high school, we had to take that beautiful gorgeous learning common with the furniture where the kids can, you know, meet together and collaborate and work and yes, socialize. All of that's been put away in storage and we have Singleton desks out. And it, we didn't have any of those kinds of spaces at the middle school to address. So that was another place that was telling to us. And I actually think, and I certainly appreciate the point, and I think we're all working to project forward. But now that we're into this, where we are and we've opened the doors and teachers have the summer to plan and really dive in, the pandemic has in some ways furthered the innovation of the instruction in a way that was going to better meet some of what we were starting to design in the new middle school. Because we were building all those maker spaces, we were building ways for kids to produce things and use the technology in new ways. And, you know, we got dropped in the deep end. So it is what it is in terms of whether we would have ever wished it to happen this way. But we are watching teachers really be creative and innovative. And I know, I know some of that is going to hold. And we're going to have a facility that'll meet it. My worry right now is almost the opposite. They're going to have a lot of these ideas that'll hold and be restricted by the, the current schools. So that's not to say we don't need to keep continually evaluating and assessing as we're designing what's happening. And I know Dawn's very deep into this too, because obviously the architects are trying to have the same conversation I'm trying to voice so that we are building schools for the future. But I think we got leapfrogged into the future instructionally and pedagogically, which is actually pretty exciting when I peel back all the stress and challenge that came with it. And I have teachers voicing and saying, boy, the way I'm doing this now is better than what I was doing before. So it's, it's going to be interesting. I agree, it's not going to be what we had before. I hope it isn't because I hope the, the better, better pieces are, are going to, you know, propel us. Once we can do some of the things that we really value, which we have lost. So, great question.
So I'm assuming that, you know, all of what you just said will certainly inform any pickup going back to the design feasibility study. Yeah?
I was just going to make that point. I'm sorry, that as we move forward through schematic design, it'll be critical to have user meetings with all of the instructors and the chairs of the departments and whatnot to, and Justin, of course, to feedback what they're doing now that's innovative that the architecture can then support. So there's plenty of time to work that through. As long as we have the space allocated, it's a matter of how you use it. So I think that those will be critical meetings that we'll have.
Any other comments from select board members? Terry?
I'm definitely in favor of resuming the committee. I think you guys are very dedicated and doing, well, still doing, even during your calls, a really excellent job. And I just want to comment a little bit about the two issues that you brought up, Tim, in your memo, the communication and the fiscal challenges. So on the communication, no doubt you're having really excellent communication with the parents and with the consultants. And I just am really glad to hear also that you're reaching, trying to reach the community like the League of Women Voters, Rotary, or whatever. I know on another project, just in last week or two, it's really hard to reach the part of the community that is not involved in that project. So whatever you can do to reach them so they don't feel surprised is just so crucial, as I'm sure you know. And then on the fiscal challenges, to try to inform and work with the finance committee as much as you can because they're very concerned about FY22 and '23. And to get, will be important.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the other side of that is, and I, I, when you step back from the immediacy of what happens this year in terms of the long-term fiscal outlook, these are the kind of projects that the country needs to do. Okay. These, these critical infrastructure projects are exactly what will propel the country forward. So I, it's always, having said that, it's not easy, it's not easy to fund a project of this magnitude in a town like ours. And the schools are, schools are expensive now. But, but it is what we should be doing as a society.
Any other comments from select board members? Jane?
Yes, I, I, you know, I wanted to second everything that Terry just said and wish the committee, you know, great speed. And I'm glad to see it officially reaching out for reengage, for a, an end of pause. And I wanted to encourage the building committee to continue to pursue all of the green building opportunities available to Tim's point. Because not only is, is, are these kind of capital projects, infrastructure for towns and municipalities so critical, but making sure that they are really the kind of, the kind of infrastructure that will address all of the challenges to all of the, the towns and to our country going forward. So.
Okay. Any other comments from the select board? So if there are specific public comments to this topic only, I would invite you to comment now.
Just as Stephen, just as a member of the building committee, I just want to also offer my support to this request. And I do think, I am actually looking forward to getting re-engaged at the committee level and see how different the perspectives of committee members are going to be, given what's transpired since our last meeting. So it is a great project. The financial challenges are, it is an expensive project, but because of how it is financed, voters will have a pretty clean choice, you know, in terms of the exclusion vote. So I think it doesn't necessarily have to have an impact on the operating budget. So I just want to kind of point that out. There'll be more on that as we go, as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. So if members of the public would like to speak on this topic only, I would entertain that now. Okay, and I'm not hearing any. So, select board, okay, I'm back to the select board. Will, are we ready to move forward with a motion? Okay, Susan, could I please hear a motion?
Yes. Move to give approval for the Concord Middle School Committee to end the pause in the feasibility and schematic design phase of the CMSBC project formerly approved by the select board and resume formal activities on or about December 1, 2020.
Okay. You may have said it, Middle School Building Committee, correct?
Yes, sorry. Yes, Middle School Building Committee.
Thank you. Okay. And I heard a second. And so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Good luck with continuing the process. And it's a lot more meetings ahead of you for a community. And hopefully that'll be broad and wide. So best of luck to everyone.
Thank you all very much for your time and thoughtful consideration. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next agenda item is the outdoor dining license extension. So there was a statute that, this fall, earlier this fall, that required the select board, if they so desired, to extend the outdoor dining license period. And I believe ours expired on November 1. And the proposal is that we would extend this to December 1. So do I, Stephen, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think we've heard requests specifically from some restaurants that they want to continue. There's two factors in this. The town has provided barriers that we're going to need to collect as we head into winter. And so we're working directly with restaurants to find out what their timing and needs are. So those who want to continue can. So I would ask that the board approve this extension so we can continue to support those restaurants who want to continue outdoor dining.
Okay. Do I hear?
Is there any impact from the governor's orders today on this?
Yes. Most liquor licenses have a, have a time when they can stop serving and it's usually 11. I think, so because that happened after we planned this, I know Chris Carmody and Jeremy are working on a notification to licensees to let them know that they have to stop, stop serving at, at 9:30. And so we'll, we'll do that on a kind of separate track.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Terry?
I'm wondering about the December 1 date. Do we have to have an end date? Because, for example, right now, the weather's been really cold. But starting Thursday is going to be really nice for a whole week. So we could get a nice week in December or even January, you know, one of those weird thaws. Do we have to have an end date? I guess is my question.
I mean, my view is because the, a lot of the permissions to facilitate outdoor dining were delegated to the town manager by the board, I think you could delegate the, end of the, delegate basically determining the end of the program to the town manager, so long as it's no later than the, the cessation, I guess, of the state of emergency, which we know is going to continue anyway. But there was language of October, November 1, or the end of the state of emergency, whichever was sooner, you could have it be, you know, authorize the town manager to provide extensions upon, you know, requested extensions. But so long as they don't continue past the, the end of the state of emergency, the declaration state of emergency. I'm also happy to come back and, you know, hopefully I'll remember more quickly than I did this time that it's expiring.
Yeah. And I would just add to, to that, inconsistent with the, the data specified in, in the statute, a regulatory statute that was issued by the governor, because that's where this December 1 date came from originally. Matt?
Yeah, I'd also be concerned that in December, you know, the barriers and other things that are put up could disrupt other kinds of activities that are going on at that time of year. So I just wonder, you know, it'd be better to just come back next time and look for an extension if that seems to make sense, is what I'd suggest.
And as London ordered, if it's allowed under the state.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, because it could be snow removal issues that come up or?
Lots of things, yeah.
We are, I should say, we are separately, like I said, I am working with CPW. We have a list of, an inventory of all that stuff that's out there by location. And so we're going to tie together who's continuing past November 1, what do they have? And so we are, operationally, we are, we are working on that as we speak.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, I would ask the chair for a motion that extends the outdoor dining license through December 1, with the operational implementation of that delegated to the town manager.
Okay. Move to retroactively extend the validity of licenses for on-premises alcohol consumption, extending said licensees' premises to include outdoor premises, consistent with the governor's COVID-19 Order Number 35 and Number 37, the Alcohol Beverage and Control Commissioner's Guidelines for Extension of Premises to Patio and Outdoor Areas and Other Applicable State Laws That May Not Be Waived Pursuant to Either of the Foregoing. This authorization and all applications approved by the town manager under this authorization shall be retroactively extended from November 1, 2020 until December 1, 2020, or when said Order 35 is rescinded, whichever is sooner, at which point the applicant's licensed premises will revert to the licensed premises in effect prior to such approval.
If everyone got that? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I think we should get longer motions in here.
You did, you did a good job.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that, and that's unanimous, and I so declare. All right, the next item is committee nominations. And will the clerk please call those? Oh, you're on mute.
Okay. Nominate Adrian Boardman of 110 Hillcrest Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2023.
Okay. And the committee appointments?
Move to appoint Dan Schmidt of 44 Baker Farm Road to the Agricultural Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2023.
Okay. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Or will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. And town manager appointments with select board approval?
Move to approve the town manager appointment of Brendan O'Neill-Kamesa of 30 Davis Court to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire on April 30, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates.
Okay. And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. And thank you to the volunteers who have stepped up for these committees. All right, we're ready for some committee liaison reports. Who would like to go first? Susan?
Yes, I just have a couple of things to report. It was a short week. The Trails Committee met on the 27th and did their usual update from the trail stewards. And there's, for the Old Rifle Range Trail, there's a grant to improve a quarter mile of the trail. And there's a CPC request for survey design and permitting funds to make the trail a uniform, a uniform four-foot width. And on December 3, 1, there's going to be a CPC hearing regarding this and other CPC proposals. I attended the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee, but I didn't, wasn't able to stay for the whole meeting. I was able to stay for an hour.
but I didn't wasn't able to stay for the whole meeting. I was able to stay for an hour. And a lot of that was devoted to kind of a training from Ben Griffiths, the GIS technician on the new software that the stewards can use when they're on a piece of property. And it sounds pretty pretty fancy, but that's all I was able to hear from them. And then Economic Vitality met on the 27th. And there's a new HUD program for businesses with over five employees. As you recall, the other one was under five. There's also a second round of grants for the under-five employee program. And there were only 70 applications from 23 communities in the first run. And there are some hurdles that probably discouraged some people. This community chess fund has awarded 30 grants, and they're changing the the threshold from $2,500 maximum to $4,000 maximum. So if you know any vendors who haven't or business owners who haven't applied yet, please encourage them to do so. They're also going to go back to the people that they awarded $2,500 to and and ask if they want additional funds. On November 7th, there's a holiday shopping event from 11:00 to 3:00. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who would go next? Jane?
Sorry, I raised my hand and was still on mute. Well, I had a full week to, you know, to complement one of my empty ones. The White Pond Advisory Committee met on the 27th and really talked about prospective new members. I know there are two new committee members that we're going to be seeing nominations for shortly. And then they spent a long time reviewing the White Pond Improvement Plan, which was the source of a second meeting I attended, which was a public hearing on that White Pond. I'm going to call it the White Pond Beach Area Improvement Plan, just to separate these 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 efforts. And I think it was a productive meeting. I mean, there's clearly a lot of concern about any changes to the pond and its environment by the White Pond Advisory Committee. And just as other meetings have been very well attended, I think there were 35 people on the Zoom. And the one thing that was very, very clear is that communication is very is more important now than ever, both because our local paper is not covering things with the same range that at one point did. And not all are getting news and notices. Maybe we can, if there's any way to do a news and notices drive, i.e. reaching out to Concord citizens to get more on it, I think that would be good in general. But there's just a a lack of information going out despite efforts on the town's part. And they came up with a list of bullet points for the beach, for the meeting on the beach improvement plan, which were submitted to, I believe, to Kate Hodges, who's been running that effort. I have not seen the full list, so I'm not going to pick and choose what I what I annotate here. I'd rather circulate a longer list another day. But I will go on to say that many of the same voices were present at the White Pond Beach Improvement Public Hearing. And I think the good news coming out of that is that the the residents heard that this is very much the beginning of the public here of the public process. Nothing's been decided or set in stone, despite, you know, concerns that that movement is going forward. And that Weston and Sampson, who has been the architectural consulting team that have been working on this, are simply consulting team. They're not, they have not submitted any kind of design that we have agreed to at this point. Or even necessarily captured, captured all of our interests. So between those two meetings, we have both concerns raised and and well heard and a dialogue that's going forward between the town staff and the residents. And I will stay on top of that to make sure that we continue to move forward positively on that. Because the the gift of the White Pond Beach was a an enormous benefit, was and will be of enormous benefit to the town. For anybody who's listening and who's not aware of where we are in that, the only two areas that are currently being actively pursued right now are access for in compliance with with the American for Disability Act. So ADA access for anyone who comes to the beach, down to the down to the beach. And also drainage off of the run the spillway. Because one of the most impactful points, impactful destructive points to the pond right now is that driveway, which is not, it's not captured. There's no the current system has been long overdue for improvements. And that's that's another main focus. The the other committee that I was that I attended on the 28th was the Transportation Advisory Committee, where Stephen Crane was elected chair. And while he was elected, I guess his co-chair or vice chair, I'm not sure exactly that, how that was determined, or what the role of what the the term is. And there was a lot of discussion, once again, about the Sudbury Road Traffic Safety Zone. I think that I also heard some real appreciation, both from comments that we received as a select board and also on the on the call, that concerns were being listened to. And then it was a really a a committee meeting about how we go forward as a as a public or as an open transparent transparent committee. Discussions, excuse me, of what Town Council had determined as the legal requirements. But I think I certainly heard that regardless of the legal requirements, there was no intent to keep this as a closed discussion. And Stephen, as the as the chair, you're welcome to jump in and add or correct. Excuse the, you're on the the main drag to Emerson here. I also had attended a special, a special meeting of the Concord Commission on Disability, which had been requested by the library, by the library. Sorry, I'm losing my notes here. To discuss the the new parking proposals. It was a a very heartfelt meeting. I think there were a lot of concerns mentioned on a number by a number. Terry was also at that meeting. And I think I suspect she'll have more ideas on this or more thoughts on this in her her comments. But at the end of it, I strongly suggested to the chair of the Disability Committee Commission that she and the Historic District Commission Chair speak offline to make sure that, you know, that we were doing everything we could to to achieve all the goals being listed. Because it's clear that they still haven't been, you know, we're not there. Again, I'm not going to go into what the disagreements on parking are. But it's it's clear that the commissioners see a set of needs that the current plans don't address. And the current plans are being discussed with both the HGC and the Disability Commission at the same time. So, you know, that's something that has to come together. And finally, I had I I attended the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, which is fun to do for maybe because I came to the select board from having just been a co-chair of this this committee. And I have to say, I'm really impressed with not only the membership, but their focus. This was a, you know, a very active discussion on how to be most strategic and, you know, what their role going forward as a I think they were describing their role vis a vis the Climate Action Advisory Board, one being policy setting and the other be and the and CSX being, you know, action items carrying out and doing some of the local feet on the ground. What are the enabling actions that that their committee can undertake? And I believe that is enough for me.
Thank you, Jane. You had a busy week. Matt?
Yeah, so I was at the Community Preservation Committee's second round of interviews for applicants. And the second round was dominated by proposals from the town of Concord, also one from the CHDC. It included funding for additional amenities on the existing stretch of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Basically, there's a punch list of items that were found later that need to be filled in, plus just some other amenities that weren't in the original scope that would be nice. Then there's a proposal to plan for the future of the Wheeler Harrington House on Harrington Ave. And then there are a number of housing proposals. First of all, funding or partially funding the housing production plan that has to be renewed and is planned to be done next year. The Regional Housing Service Office Program, so partial funding for that. And then helping the CHDC buy down future units by contributing to their fund for that purpose. And then finally, just the administrative thing on the staff and technical services. So there were actually very robust discussions on the earlier ones of agenda items of this. And we will be taking a week off here for the election on Tuesday night. But back to the third round of applicant interviews on November 10th, the third and final. Also, we wanted to report out from the subcommittee that was formed in our last meeting, the Community Volunteer Subcommittee. And we had a great meeting, I think. We reviewed the feedback that we had gotten and then went over an outline of a policy slash procedure for dealing with the community volunteer process. We are collecting additional feedback on that among the committee this week and plan to present at the next select board meeting, you know, our findings. One of the notes that we'd make is, I think, very similar to how we have done with the correspondence policy. We might just use this as a procedure informally for a little while, understand whether that's working, and then enshrine it as a policy perhaps in a little while. So those are the two updates that I had for this week.
Thank you, Matt. Terry?
Yes, I have a pretty brief report. I think Matt and Jane have covered a lot of, yes, we had a great meeting with Matt and Stephen and I on on the volunteer committees. And you'll be hearing pretty soon, we'd like to be opening up to the full select board. And I really agree with you, Jane, that we need some kind of news and notices drive or something. We heard tonight from this middle school committee and also at the White Pond Committee, it came up that the people who are participating are really getting a lot out of it. But there's other people who don't seem to know about it. And this is always a problem. I know I've talked with Stephen about it. It's always a problem. But we have to find a way to reach those people, and it's really a challenge now, but we have to keep working on it. So I like that idea of a news and notices drive. That might work. You did a good job, Jane, covering the Committee on Disabilities. I think the two chairs, the HGC Chair and the Committee Commission on Disabilities Chair, are working really well together. The problem is the rest of the two committees are miles apart. And so we'll see what happens. They're all going to be talking November 4th, I guess, at the HGC meeting, when the HGC takes up this parking again. And finally, I attended the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee, where one of the big topics was unemployment insurance fraud. And it turns out, after I asked staff here, we are having some issues with that, like all the other towns in the state. Part of the problem is computer hacking. Part of the problem is the forms are not up to date since COVID. And so there's a lot of different issues that I don't want to go into, but it was good to hear about it, and our staff is actively engaged in figuring out what to do about it.
And it happened to me, so I know it's happened.
You mean, you got hacked or what?
No, a claim was submitted in my name.
Right. I think that might have happened to me too, because I have gotten a weird letter saying, thank you for applying, here's all this information. And I'm like, what? So, yeah.
And the state has a website for reporting those incidents.
Yeah, can I make a brief comment on this, Linda?
Yes.
Terry, this is a great point. I just want to tell folks, I mean, we we sent out notices a little bit ago about our our own data breach. This this scam, the unemployment claims, has been going on since before that incident even occurred. And I will tell you that over the weekend, I was a part of email, an email chain with area town managers, and they were all going to the same thing. So I think this is probably an offshore attempt, and it's happening in multiple municipalities and locations. So it's this is not unique to Concord. It's a it's a large problem.
Right. That's why it was a topic even at the MMA level.
Okay. Terry, you're finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I also had a full week. I attended the joint meeting of the CPS and CCRHS district. They spent a fair amount of time reviewing FY20 budget variances and also went through the FY approved budget with with the committee members. And particularly noted that their E and D has increased to 4.99%, having been quite low the previous year and so noted by Moody's. And they are now almost at the limit of 5% or 1.7 million, which will result in a good Moody's report. And they also help hope will help them over the next couple of years with the uncertainty of budgets and funding. I attended the CHCD meeting, which was also their annual meeting, where they and they reviewed a number of tasks to close the Junction Village Junction Heights property before the June, June, next June closing, which is the outside date for the next closing. And they also updated on the 930 habitat project, among other things that we also heard about tonight. I'll just comment that I also, after the fact, reviewed the White Pond Forum recording. And I want to encourage everyone, even when you're not from that neighborhood, to find that online under the White Pond Advisory Committee webpage, I believe that's where it is, and to look at that forum. And I want to particularly call out that there's also a White Pond survey under news and notices right now, which, again, should be responded to not just by the neighborhood and butters, but by people across the town, because it is a resource for the entire town. I want to call out the excellent job that I thought Kate Hodges did introducing the forum, and I'm calling it out for a specific reason. Not unlike other hot-button issues in town, there's a lot of fervor that gets generated with misinformation. And and there, you know, before before the forum even starts or before a particular hearing even starts. And there, you know, before the forum even starts or before a particular hearing even starts. And she did her best to capture a lot of what was floating out there that was with some intensity and responded to those point by point before the then formal presentation was made. And I think that was an excellent technique, and I really noted it myself. I did catch up with the FinCom meeting for this week, where they spent a fair amount of time talking about definitions and the structure of debt. And because the guidelines will not be set until February this year, they have some extra time to look in, both as a orientation and training session for everyone on the committee. And particularly knowing that the Capital Planning Committee is doing their work and that the Middle School Building Committee is also probably going, middle school will be coming down soon for a town vote. So that, they put a lot of effort into that and will continue to identify issues and respond to, re-explore that. And then I also attended a multiple town coordinating committee, where, which is getting ready for the 2025 Centennial Celebration. You're going to be hearing more about that in the next couple of weeks at the town meeting. These were just, this was an informal committee that had met previously. And I think, if you recall, our former Chair, Mike Lawson, mentioned that in passing. And they needed to pick up briefly again and get that going. So I did, I was asked and I did go attend to that, but we'll deal with that as a committee more in the future. So that concludes my report for the week. So if we can, miscellaneous correspondence. I think we've received some correspondence as a follow-up to the open meeting law complaint that we spoke about last time. There's been some additional correspondence regarding Esterbrook Trail. And that's all that I'm aware of at this point. And public comments, are there any public comments? Tanya? If you'll state your name and your address, and you're on mute.
Thank you. Tanya Gaila, 62 Prescott Road. I was sort of happy that I would not have to speak today at all and just watch it on YouTube. But this is about the comments that Jane made about the Transportation Advisory Committee. Yes, it was a wonderfully run meeting. Thank you, Mr. Crane, for that. Yes, people are heard. I agree with those. So this is not about how those meetings are being run. However, as I mentioned in my letter, we cannot assume that everything will be upfront. In fact, that's the whole point of the insistence that it is not a public body and that some meetings need to be held in private. So I think it is important not to gloss that over, not because there is necessarily anything wrong with that, but because that is the truth. So we should keep that in mind. That's why, unless, unless I file for a review by the Attorney General's Office and they find that it is in fact a public body. Until then, we should not assume that everything is upfront, because that is what the Connolly exception is. And I want to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Name and your address, please. We know who you are.
Ned Perry, 362 Bedford Street. Thank you very much. I think I heard reference to the HDC meeting being on November 4th. I've just looked online, and from what I can tell, it's actually on Thursday, November 5th at 7:00 PM. I too watched the hastily-called meeting of the Commission on Disability and was similarly impressed with the, really the emotional messages being sent by the Commission to the Library Corporation. And I'm glad to hear this evening that there has been some encouragement between the Chairs of the Commission on Disability and the Historic District Commission. There have been discussions in the past of having both those, the Commission and the Historic District Commission and the HDC meet together. And I don't know whether that might help resolve these issues. Their, the original bump-out parking that was approved through the system a year and a half ago was done on misinformation. And that information now has been corrected, and the corporation is seemingly quite tone-deaf. So I hope that I hope that anybody interested will be able to tune in on Thursday at 7:00 PM on March 5th, not March 5th, November 5th, rather than November 4th. Thank you. I hope that clarification and correction is noted. Thank you.
Is noted and helpful. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to ask the clerk to read a motion. "We need to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session to discuss ongoing litigation regarding Esterbrook Road, because doing so in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation strategy." Can I hear a motion from the clerk?
Move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session to discuss ongoing litigation regarding Esterbrook Road. Doing so in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation strategy.
Okay, your second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.